I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, February 4th, 2013. Want to welcome everyone. Tonight, we have with us Pastor Lee Delbridge of the Smyrna Christian Church. Lee, if you'll come forward. Lee's always been so faithful and so committed to this community and most of all, whenever we call him, he always comes to give the invocation and the prayer. So at this time, would everyone please rise?
Father in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to be here. We thank you for life itself. We thank you for these leaders who are willing to give of their time and their work to lead this city. We ask that you bless them and guide them. The decisions they make may be the right decisions. Thank you for loving us. Through Jesus, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks that may not know where the Smyrna Christian Church is, it's out Concord Road, right next to Regent's Bank at the traffic light. So no reason why you can't get in and out of there. They've got a traffic light there. And Lee, we always thank you for your commitment to the city and coming and giving the indication. Thank you so much. Agenda changes. The only thing I think that we, that there's a change on the agenda is actually a proclamation for the Girl Scouts. Is there anyone here from the Girl Scouts? I think they called late this afternoon and said they could not be here. We're going to postpone that till the meeting of February the 18th, and we will present that proclamation to those folks at that time. We've got two things on the mayor's report tonight. Is there someone here to accept the proclamation and recognition for Black History Month? I see Betty Williams out there and some other folks.
Lisa Castleberry?
If y'all want to come forward, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Ms. Terry Nulwich to read the proclamation. If y'all want to come forward, we'll get that read and give that to you. As everyone knows, Black History Month starts, it started in February. And I'm going to let Terry Nulwich read this proclamation. In the proclamation, it does address things that happened years ago. And I do want to say this, it addresses issues that deal with President Abraham Lincoln. And for those folks that have not had an opportunity, and I'm not getting anything at all for trying to promote this movie, but one of the best movies I've seen in a long time is the movie Lincoln. It's absolutely unbelievable. It tells the history of our country, and it also tells a lot of things that happened in the background during the time of the Civil War that a lot of us probably didn't even know about, and that's the 13th Amendment. And I'm going to ask Terry, Councilmember Terry Nulwich, to please read that proclamation. And before I forget it, Councilmember Andrea Bluestein is not here tonight. She is, is not feeling well. She's got a, actually, she's got a bursted eardrum. So we were hoping for laryngitis, but we got a busted eardrum. And I say that because I love Andrea, but she's a sweetheart, but she's, she's got a busted eardrum, so she's not here tonight. So she probably couldn't hear what I was saying anyway because she's got a bad eardrum. But Ms. Terry Nulwich, if you will, please read the proclamation and please make the presentation.
Thank you. I would like it. And before I read the proclamation, I'd also like to note that there are several Black History Month events happening throughout Smyrna in February. On February 23rd, at 7:00 PM at Campbell Middle School, there is going to be a program. There are several programs that are going to be coming up at the library. We'll make announcements on those when we do our committee reports this evening. And at our next council meeting on February 18th, there's going to be a performance by the Spiritual Heirs. And that is, they're amazing. They've been performing for more than 50 years. They are based here in Smyrna, and I highly recommend, if you can't be here in person, watch it online because, or on television, because they are amazingly gifted, and it's going to be wonderful to see them. And we're very, very happy to have them here at our next council meeting. So let me read this proclamation. By the Mayor of the City of Smyrna, in recognition of Black History Month, each year during Black History Month, the City of Smyrna explores the history and culture of African-Americans, discovers a treasure of stories about the triumph of the human spirit, and supports special programs and displays. And whereas the year 2013 marks the anniversaries of two important events in the history of African-Americans. And whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Lincoln issued the final Emancipation Proclamation declaring that all persons held as slaves in the rebel states are, quote, "and henceforth shall be free." And whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation also called for the recruitment and establishment of black military units in the Union forces, and 200,000 African-Americans subsequently enlisted in the armed forces to fight for and reclaim their right to be free citizens and ultimately bring an end to slavery in the United States. And whereas in 1963, 100 years later, the United States stood at another crossroads. The United States Supreme Court had outlawed segregation in public schools nine years earlier, but there were still innumerable forms of discrimination that made African-Americans second-class citizens in their own country. And whereas on August 28th, 1963, hundreds of thousands of Americans, black and white, marched to the memorial for Abraham Lincoln, the author of the Emancipation Proclamation, to continue the pursuit of equality and self-determination. And whereas Martin Luther King Jr. delivered his celebrated speech, "I Have a Dream," announcing that the days of legal segregation were numbered. And whereas, the Black History Month theme for 2013 is "At the Crossroads of Freedom and Equality, the Emancipation Proclamation and the March on Washington," commemorating these major crossroads in the struggle of African-Americans for freedom and equality. And whereas, Black History is not only important to African-Americans, but is an essential part of American history. It is fitting that we set aside a special time to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to our American culture. Now therefore, I.A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2013 to be Black History Month.
If you'll present that to them. I'm not sure if there's a spokesperson for the group, anything that you'd like to say? Don't be afraid.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for this, and hopefully next year, I can work with you and Andrea, and maybe we can do something. I would like to do something with Mount Zion Church. You know, the Spiritual Heirs.
Yes, he's going to be giving the invocation.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, he is.
Okay. So I mean, I'm free to work with anybody to do something else. Okay.
And so am I.
Yes, you have some volunteers. So we'll just get with you on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Item C, on the agenda swinging, of the Chief of Police, David Lee. I'm going to ask first that our judge, City Court Judge Alton Curtis, Municipal Court Judge Alton Curtis, come forward. Alton, if you want to come up here. I'd ask that Chief David, soon to be Chief David Lee, I think he's already sworn in, but, or he's already taken oath or something. David, if you'll come forward, and anybody that you want to come up here with you, your family, I want you to introduce them and any of your friends. There's a lot of brass out there. I saw a lot of stars and stuff. Anybody, David, that you want to come up, because I want you to introduce everyone that's here. And you know what I'm going to get you to do, David? How about coming up here? We'll get you under the scrape sign on City of Smyrna.
Scott, can we have a Bible?
I'm going to turn this over to, does Curtis, after Chief Lee introduces his spokesperson?
Chief, if you place your left hand on the Bible or raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, David Lee.
I, David Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Smyrna Chief of Police.
Of Smyrna Chief of Police.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further do solemnly swear.
I further do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the City of Smyrna.
To the City of Smyrna.
And that I will serve it faithfully.
And that I will serve it faithfully.
Against all its enemies whosoever.
Against all its enemies whosoever.
I swear that I am not the holder.
I swear that I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Of any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am.
Which I am.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
By the laws of the State of Georgia.
Prohibited from holding.
From prohibited from holding.
I swear that I am.
I swear that I am.
Otherwise qualified.
Otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And in all my actions.
And in all my actions.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
Will act as I believe.
Will act as I believe.
For the best interests.
For the best interests.
Of the City of Smyrna.
Of the City of Smyrna.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thanks, sir.
Print your name there and sign your name later.
Yes, sir.
Who's acting as our notary, Mr. Cochran? Who's acting as the notary?
We didn't have to be notarized because you've signed it as a jury. Just write, just write Georgia.
Not a good sign.
Mr. Mayor?
I didn't know it was my turn to bring it back.
Thank you. First, I'm going to introduce my beautiful wife, Lisa Lee. It's my daughter, Delaney. It's my older brother, Alan. His wife, Jan. My sister, Sue. My other daughter, Amanda, and her husband, Blake. My beautiful grandbaby, Annabelle Lee Harris. And my former boss, Chief Dan Flynn. And there are several others out here, Major Farrell, Chief Grogan from the Dunwoody Police Department, Chief Sewell from the Patterson Springs Police Department, Lieutenant Kish, Major Hathaway from Marietta. They're making sure I got sworn in that I, that I'm actually here and gone from Marietta. And also Chief Flynn's wife, Denise, and Major Kelker, I'm sorry, taking the photographs. Did I miss anybody? Okay.
Still a ghost thing?
Tried to get me in trouble already, sir. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Other than just to say that we're delighted to have David as our new police chief. Chief Hook, gosh, 23 years as our police chief, and, you know, we don't make a lot of changes as police chief, but David came highly recommended, not only from Mayor Tumlin, which I talked to him about, but also from the law enforcement community, which I think is excellent. So if you're only as half as good as they say you are, you'll be okay. But we are excited about having you, and we're glad to meet your family. And now your daughter will say a couple words. Now, I scared her a minute ago. I said, "Do you know what to say?" And she said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa." But we are glad to have you, and I think the department, as much as they love Chief Hook, they welcome the new chief, and I think that they're excited about having somebody new, sort of like the citizens probably like to have a new mayor every now and then too. But we're glad to have you, and we do this, and I want to thank Ron Newcomb again. He chairs the Public Safety Committee. Who'd I say? Boy, what an insult. Ron Fennel, who chaired the Public Safety Committee and also the committee, which had Wade Lenika, Jason Lanning, Eric Taylor. Was that the only three we had on? HR Director Kay Bowley. So they did a pretty in-depth search, and this is the best we could do. No, we're kidding. Don't start crying, man. That's a joke. But we are glad to have you. So that's okay. Don't have any bullets in there yet. David, thank you so much. We look forward to a long career. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all, eggheads stays left.
You want the family first.
Yeah, family first. Sorry. Family first.
Okay.
Anyone that'd like to?
Sir, if your whole family can get in next year, we'll take a picture of everybody.
Excellent.
Get that baby out of that thing and take a picture with David holding his grandbaby.
Now let him hold her. Max is bad. What's the baby sound crying? All right, here we go.
There you go. There you go.
All right. Get that son-in-law to look forward. Put backing away from it, son-in-law. It's okay. Very good. Got it. Annabelle.
Chief and the council, please.
Yeah, Mrs. Chief Flynn from Marietta.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to commend the Smyrna Mayor and City Council and everyone involved in this election on selecting this excellent man. You have, it's an honor for us in the City of Marietta that you've seen fit to pick this good man. He is going to, we are sure, is going to serve you as an excellent Chief of Police, and it's our hope that we'll even strengthen the already good bonds that we have between the City of Marietta and the City of Smyrna. So thank you, and you have our compliments.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Melanie and Hawking and Terry, if I'm going to get a picture. Let's make this quick.
Okay, Max, if you'll put your right elbow against the wall. Chief, if you'll put your left, not elbow, I'm sorry. I knew he'd do that. Shoulder, left finger in, twist it around. Got it. There you go. Excellent. There you go.
That's a sparkles right now.
Make this quick.
That's okay? Okay. Smile. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Give it back to Linda.
Special thanks again to our Judge Alton Curtis for coming and administering the oath. Glad to see Chief Flynn from Marietta and all the other folks that came in to see this. We got a good one, so. Item 4 is land issues, onings and annexations. We have nothing on that portion of the agenda. Item 5 is privileged licenses. We have nothing under privileged licenses. Item 6 is formal business. A is a public hearing, Charter Amendment Ordinance Number 2012-23, amending Section 6C, redistricting plan for seven wards of the City of Smyrna, second and final public hearing vote, I'm sorry, second and final public hearing. I'll ask that Mr. Taylor give us the background on this, and then I'm sure that Linda Mengers might want to say a few words. And if there's any public comment, we'll take that public comment. So Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, as a result of the 2010 census, City Council has had to go back and relook at how the seven wards of the city are allocated in terms of where the voters are. And because federal law requires balanced districts, it's necessary for us to go ahead and adopt a, another, or a revised map that will be effective 2015. This is a charter change, therefore, two votes are required, two public hearings. The first public hearing and vote was held last, two weeks ago, at the last meeting. Tonight is the second and final hearing and vote, and we do recommend approval.
I'm not sure, are we seeing, we're seeing the map, and I hope everybody can see that. We have a map over on this side of the room that shows the changes, and we have this map, plus you can also pull it up on our website. During our public hearings previously to this final public hearing, we had some issues that were brought up about some, where some of the lines were drawn. I think that we have made those adjustments. I think for the most part, everybody's okay with where they are. Is there anyone here that would like to make any public comment concerning these new redistrict areas of the seven wards? And the way that I understand this is that this will go into effect at a date, Ms. Cochran, you're going to have to tell me, or Ms. Mengers, will have, this will go into effect at what time? Because this is the second year of a four-year term, and we're approving these changes. So going to affect when, Scott?
Right, they'll be effective for the next election.
Okay, so where you are, is that correct, Scott?
Yeah, yes, yeah, whenever the qualifying is for the next election, three years from now.
Okay. All right, is anyone, does anyone want to make, like I say, this is open for public comment. Does anyone want to make any public comment or ask any questions at this time? Some areas, there's not much change. Other areas, like four and seven and three, there's some substantial changes. And this is our third or fourth public hearing that we have had. Anyone want to make any comment about, there'll still be seven districts represented by seven individuals, and then of course, the mayor runs it large. Ms. Mengers, anything that you'd like to say? She's got it.
Just to say that.
Linda, didn't I give you back that microphone? Yep.
The bottom. The very bottom. The bottom.
No, it's not the bottom, it's on the side. Side, you're good.
Okay. The plan meets all the legal requirements. It's, has an average deviation of 3%, where the law requires you to stay within a plus or minus 5%. So we've accomplished that. I think we've responded as best as we could to the neighborhoods and put those back together.
What?
I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. The council has done a good job of responding to the neighborhoods, of trying to keep them intact. Sometimes there was a different kind of understanding as to where those neighborhoods should be, but they've responded to that. So I think we've met the, kept the racial percentages where we need to have them, et cetera. So I think it's a strong plan that should go forward.
Any questions of Linda? Linda, thank you so much for your work that you put into it. Of course, she got, she got paid, but she came, she came highly recommended, and one of the reasons why we, I didn't know who Linda was. The years that, in the past, we've pretty much had somebody that's not involved as elected officials in the process until it gets time for us to make the decision. So Linda, other than she, she knew Ron Fennel from the legislature, but she, she knows what has to be done. She knows what has to be moved here, if you can do it, if you can't, and the criteria that you have to meet for it to pass the test, which goes to the Department of Justice. So confident this is going to, that these are all done properly. And Linda, we thank you so much for your help. I knew the first night that we met Linda that, boom, she'd been doing this all of her life at a state level, and just, you know, so. Ronnie, anything you want to say?
Yes, sir. I also want to personally thank Linda for basically coming out of retirement. She had a well-earned retirement, but thank you for serving this role on, on our behalf as a city. And she has been doing this all of her adult life, haven't you, Linda? I do want to remind the voters that this map, once adopted, does not take effect until 2015, following the elections, which means between now and then, whomever you voted for as your ward representative on council will remain your representative on council through that next election. Now, once these maps go to the legislature and get adopted, you can see what the future looks like, and we can see. So we're starting to pay attention, and you'll, you'll have a couple of us paying attention to some neighborhoods, maybe where we're, one's going to hand off to the other and that sort of thing. For example, in Ward Seven, that I'm privileged to represent, we have well over 12,000 people in Ward Seven right now, and the ideal district size is under, just at 7,000. So remember that we grew by 25% as a city. We've grown quite a bit. And a lot of that change has been a part of the new folks moving into Smyrna, but the building that has occurred in the last decade. And in order to meet our requirement under the U.S. Constitution, one man, one vote, we just take the total number of people who live in Smyrna and divide by seven, and that's your ideal district size. And that's how we computed and came up with this final map. I urge each of you to have an opportunity between now and the next election to take a close look at it. I will have this at my town hall meeting on Thursday night, so that you can look at the map if you have any questions about neighborhoods. It's not always a pretty thing to see the map, but it's, it goes within a certain definitional boundary, and it tries to achieve parity for all members of the community. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
If you have a comment? If there's no other comment, then I'll entertain a motion that we adopt this resolution.
I move approval.
I have a motion by Councilman Ron Fennel, and a second by Corky Welch. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 6-0. Thank you very much. Item number 6B under formal business, adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the hospital authority of the City of Smyrna Revenue Anticipation Certificates Ridgeview Institute, Inc., project. The background, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, the Ridgeview Institute is seeking to refinance what is remaining on 1998 bonds that were issued through the city's hospital authority. In order to retain the tax-exempt status, the IRS code requires approval of the elected body in order to maintain this tax-exempt status. Among those things that you have to do, you have to have a public hearing, you have to have an ad in the paper soliciting input at the public hearing, then you have to have a report back to the elected body. The hearing has taken place. The ad in the paper was properly placed, and therefore, we are now at the point where we are approving the resolution. have an ad in the paper soliciting input at the public hearing, then you have to have a report back to the elected body. The hearing has taken place. The ad in the paper was properly placed, and therefore, we are now at the point where we are approving the resolution for them to retain their tax-exempt status. This has no bearing on the city of Smyrna's treasure chest here, or the amount of money we have here, and so therefore, we do recommend approval.
Hi, is there...
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote in an abundance of caution and upon the advice of the city attorney. Many of you know that I serve as a volunteer board member for Woodland Ridge Senior Living and Assisted Living and Alzheimer's Care Facility that is adjacent to the Ridge View Institute campus. There are relationships between those two nonprofit organizations. And so, again, to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I'm going to recuse myself and step away for these proceedings. Thank you.
Is there anyone here? I know that Bob Fink is here. Bob, any comments that you'd like to make? Wait.
I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay, you can come forward, please. Just for the record, Bob, just tell us who you are.
My name is Robert Fink. I'm the founder and presently the chairman of Ridge View Institute. We were built in 1976 with tax-exempt bonds. At that time, Mayor Bacon's mother, in fact, was on the board of directors. Eventually, his father, Mayor Arthur Bacon, was on the board. We've been serving the community since 1976, which is 37 years. We are a nonprofit, freestanding, not related to any other organization. That's it.
Before I forget it, my mother, who lives at Delmar Gardens now, and still owns a house behind City Hall, and my little sister, Jeanne Ruth, I hope my mother's watching, kinda. My little sister just ran across two, I guess ceremonial kind of construction hats. I guess when he broke around or did something, and it had Ridge View Institute, had my mother's name on it, and also my dad's name on it. My sister said, hey, we just, what are these for? I said, she said, that probably needs to be thrown away. Mother, she didn't throw them away, but I'm sure that maybe, I mean, they're neat hats. They've been there since, I guess, 1980?
I think they were probably from 1982, and we built one in the new buildings, right? Newer buildings then, anyway.
It might be good to go in a collection somewhere, or some display cabinet or something. But, yeah, I mean, my mother, I think, was initially on the board. She was a nurse. She was in World War II, and she also was a private duty nurse for a number of years, and then my dad was mayor after that, so they were very much involved in Ridge View. Any questions of the council has, we had a lengthy discussion prior to the, to our meeting tonight about, especially the new members, to make sure they were comfortable with approving something and why we were approving it. And I think they got all their questions answered by our chief of staff, I mean, legal counsel, Mr. Cochran. Any questions anybody would like to ask Mr. Fink while he's here? Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we approve this resolution. Let's see, let me see what number this is. Adopt the resolutions, the issuance of the Smyrna, of the hospital authority, the city of Smyrna Revenue Anticipation Certificates.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. There any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That is approved 5-0. And for the record, Mr. Lenica abstained, not abstained, he recused himself from this, and Ms. Taryn Nullwich, I'm sorry, Ms. Andrea Bluestein is out sick, so that's approved. That's the most folks you could have got, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the city council. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. I'm going to, if somebody will let Mr. Lenica know that, you can come back in. Item eight is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We have four items on the agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the January 22, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval to use council chambers on February the 6, 2013, from 6:45 to 9 o'clock PM for Williams Park Neighborhood HOA meeting. Item C is approval of Atkins Park 2013 St. Patrick's Day Celebration in the Market Village on Saturday, March 16, 2013, from 1 o'clock PM to 10:45 PM, and also on Sunday, March 17, from 1 o'clock PM to 8 o'clock PM. And the last item is an approval of Zone Five Events to hold a 10K road race to be held on November 16, 2013, ending at 9:30 AM.
Here, motion, we approve the consent agenda? And motion and second, approve the consent agenda? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. Thank you very much. Item nine is committee reports, and before I start with Ms. Pritchett, I do want to recognize Deputy Chief Mike Brown, who has been a member of the department for, how many years, Mike? 36 years. I appreciate all the hard work this you have done, and as acting chief, and in that interim period of time, and also during the time that you were Chief Hook's deputy chief. We thank you so much, and we don't tell you enough. Mike's sort of a low-key kind of guy, never says much, but he knows his stuff, and I think Chief Lee's got a good right-hand man, so. Ms. Melanie Pritchett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just say, welcome to our new chief, David Lee, and our deputy chief, Mike Brown. I'm so excited about the two of you being the team that's going to lead our law enforcement. I just think there's going to be some great things coming down the pipe for Smyrna. In our interview with Chief Lee, before he was chief, he talked about some ideas that he had that would be great for our community, and I'm really excited about that. On the part of redistricting, Ward One does not change at all. The boundaries stay the same. I think we had 27 or 28 people over the limit, but there's no way to cut that, those few people out of Ward One and put them somewhere else. So, Ward One stayed the same, and you won't have to worry about looking at the maps, because it's going to be the same. But if you want to see the whole map, then, of course, you can come to City Hall or go the website, it is on there. And with that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich?
Thank you. I wanted to just note again that at the next mayor and council meeting, which is on Monday, February 18, 2013, please join us. We're going to have a special presentation for Black History Month. The invocation will be given by Reverend John Hurst of Mount Zion Baptist Church. That church is in many ways the heart of the historic Rose Garden and Davenport Town community. And there will also be a performance of several songs by The Spiritual Heirs. They have been lifting their voices together for more than 50 years, and I really encourage everyone to either come here on Monday night, Monday, the 18th, or tune in at home, and you will not regret it. It's going to be a wonderful performance. And Ms. Wilkinson will have some information on additional Black History Month activities taking place at the library. And also, on February 23, again, there is going to be a Black History Month commemoration at 7:00 PM at Campbell Middle School. That is February 23, 7:00 PM, Campbell Middle School. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No committee reports, but I would like to thank Scott Stokes and the Public Works Department, and Ken Sudruth with Community Development for facilitating the cleanup on Concord Road today of a rather unsightly mess that we had. Both those departments worked diligently and got a bank out to take care of it, so we appreciate that. That's all.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to tell everyone in Ward Five that the redistricting maps, Ward Five doesn't change very much. The only thing that's going to change is the Surrey Park condominium complex off of Church Road will be moving into Ward Three, but the rest of Ward Five will remain the same. And I'd also like to announce that the Garden Club at the Oaks of Concord has contacted me about have the interest in getting together a neighborhood watch program. So, I'm having a meeting this Saturday with them at the Wolf Center from 10 to 12, and we're going to have Officer Michael Smith as our guest there to tell us about the neighborhood watch program. And so, I'm excited about that, and anybody that would like to come, even if you don't live in the Oaks of Concord, you're welcome to come to the meeting. Thank you. And I'd like to announce what's going on at Bronner Hall on February the 17, from 12 to 5:00 PM. There is a bridal show. The tickets in advance are $5 when you purchase, purchase them online, and there will be $10 at the door. And there will be door prizes, and tastings, and fashion show, and educational seminars. And you will also, they will have the Marietta Trolley there to give rides between locations. And you can come see how, you can have a wedding of your dream for $5,000 or less at these venues, and there will be several sponsors there, and they will have goodie bags for the first 100 brides. So, and, and now, I'd like to also talk about what's going on at the library for Black History Month. For the children, on Saturday, February the 23, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, they're going to have members of the Cobb Cluster of the Southern Order of Storytellers and of the Kumba Storytellers of Georgia will share stories that celebrate Black history. They will also share songs, as well as items like African dolls with the audience. This program is for all ages, and the emphasis will be on stories for children. The next day, Sunday, February 24, they will have a program at the library for adults for Black history, celebrating Black History Month. And that program will be from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and they will have several speakers there for that program. And with that, I yield.
Dwight Lenica?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to welcome Chief David Lee to Smyrna, and look forward to working with him and seeing the changes he's going to make in our department to take it to the next level. We appreciate the great leadership of Chief Stan Hook over many years, and the solid support he got from Deputy Chief Mike Brown, who's been there every time I called him and needed help. Chief Lee, you've got a great deputy chief, and I know you all have worked together in the past, and we know that's only going to continue and get better. I want to thank the residents of Heritage Advinnings for allowing me to host their annual HOA meeting a couple of weeks ago. Also, the residents of Forest Hills for their neighborhood watch meeting that Councilman Corky Welch and I co-hosted in the community center. Enjoyed working and meeting with those folks. I want to thank Linda Mengers, who's here as our consultant on the reapportionment process. She did a great job and was a great help to us and our council getting through the process, making sure we did it right. It was my pleasure to also get to meet with some of the residents of Rose Garden and Davenport Town a few weeks ago, along with Linda and Councilwomen Bluestein and Nullwich. And I hope we've got questions in their minds, and any questions or issues resolved. That was a great meeting. The citizens gave us two hours of their time, and we are very grateful for that, and we had a great, open and honest dialogue, and I hope the changes that we make meet with everyone's approval. I appreciate Betty Williams and the others who helped put that meeting together. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Department has an update and a notice that they wanted me to bring to your attention. The chief is scoping out some equipment at one of our trade shows, but he phoned me this afternoon, and I want to read this to you. As part of National Severe Weather Awareness Week, which is this week, the Smyrna Emergency Management Agency will be participating in a statewide tornado drill. So, Wednesday morning, this Wednesday morning, February 6, at 9:00 AM, in lieu of the typical siren at the first Wednesday of the month at noon, we're going to do it at 9:00 AM on Wednesday, so don't be alarmed. That is a test that will happen on Wednesday morning at 9 o'clock. The recent storms and some of the sirens were raised some issues with some residents. We'll have the chief here at the next meeting to talk a little bit further about that, because we want to make sure when a sound, an alarm is sounded, that everyone has the proper knowledge of what that is and what to do in response to it. And these tests occur on that first Wednesday of every month as a test. It'll be at 9:00 in the morning instead of at noon this time around, and we'll learn more the next time the chief is in town to talk about that. The Police Department, I don't know if Deputy Chief Brown has a report. I know that Chief Lee, now being in charge, two things I wanted to acknowledge. First of all, with the head of the neighborhood watch program, Mike Brown, and with Corporal Flowers down at the Vinnings Estates Annual Homeowners Association meeting last Saturday, both gentlemen ably represented the Smyrna Police Department on the neighborhood watch program and on the security program that that community has and has had for three consecutive years in partnership. And Mike Smith is awesome in his role as the neighborhood watch coordinator. He's helping these young men and women in their communities take ownership of their neighborhood watch responsibilities, and he's helping us out, and thank you very much, Mike Smith. Chief, welcome aboard. There's work to be done, and we are glad you are finally here. I do echo the sentiments that were offered by Councilman Lenica regarding your predecessor, Stan Hook, served as ably for 23 years, and as a Ward Seven resident, he will continue to be active in the community. It's just generally going to be on the golf course from here on and taking care of some grandchildren, but I'm happy he's still around for a long time to come. This Thursday night, did you have anything, chief, you wanted to offer as a report? I was excited to learn that a couple of our motorcycle police officers are contributing in different ways now than riding a hog. They're, they're great detectives, and they're back at work, and we're thrilled by that, and we're happy that the city of Smyrna has two, these two fine officers contributing in a way different than where they were before, but we appreciate them remaining a part of the force, and we appreciate all of the department chipping in to make sure that they were well taken care of, including the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation for supporting as needed when they were called upon. Thursday night of this week, the Ward Seven and Ward Six representatives are holding a joint town hall meeting to talk about a tract of land where the owner of the property is asking for a different use than was approved by council four years ago, I guess. So, this Thursday night, February 7, at 7:00 PM, at Jim &amp; Nick's on South Cobb Drive, everybody knows where that is, but at 7:00 PM in the front room of Jim &amp; Nick's, we'll have a town hall meeting. At that meeting, we'll discuss and we'll hear from the applicant for that property's repurposing. Their ideas about what they want to use that property as opposed to what was approved before will be fully outlined, and we'll be able to answer any questions that residents have, since it's in Ward Six, but it'll affect Ward Six and Ward Seven residents who are close by. We wanted to make sure to give an opportunity before that came, before council, to air those options being considered by the applicant. Also at that meeting, we'll have this redistricting map, so anybody in Ward Six and Ward Seven who might want to just drill down and see some of the changes that'll occur down in our area, that you'll have an opportunity to. And then I'm going to have a poll question at the town hall meeting, and to find out what that's about, you have to show up. So, it's Thursday night, 7:00. I hope as many Ward Seven residents as we can get into Jim &amp; Nick's can show up, and I know Councilman Lenica has invited a lot of Ward Six residents as well. Finally, Mr. Mayor, I have a monthly email report, an update that I do from City Council for Ward Seven residents, and anyone else who cares, I know you have better things to do than to read what City Council's doing, but if you aren't getting that monthly report, you can send me an email or phone me. My email is very simple, ronfennel@me.com. Ronfennel@me.com, or you can go to the city's website, pull down, leave me an email there, or leave a voicemail message, and we'll get you on the email blast, so you can keep up with what's going on. With that, Mr. Mayor, it's my pleasure to, again, welcome the chief, look forward to working with you, and that concludes my report.
Mr. Eric Taylor?
Scott Cochran.
Our acting city clerk. Samantha, you don't have anything? Okay. Item 10 is show cause hearing. We have nothing. Item 11 is citizens' input. First person to sign up is Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Topic is comments. up is Alec Bakri, thirty-four fifty-nine, Shawnee Trail. Topic is comments.
My comments tonight are on the, uh, water and, uh, utilities bill. Um, we had an eight percent increase last August, and now you're gonna do another six percent starting February first. Doing the math, our base bill rounding it off to fifteen dollars. Fifteen dollars is twelve thousand registered, uh, resident homeowners in Smyrna. On that twelve thousand, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month. Taking the sanitation pickup is approximately twenty dollars. That's two hundred and forty thousand per month, for a total of four hundred and twenty thousand per month, times twelve, is five million, one hundred and forty dollars. You didn't, when we went from two days a week to one, the, they did not reduce the rates on that as well as the leaf program. Our services were cut, but those rates are in effect. We also have a tier rate, mine, six dollars and eighty cents for two tiers, and a city base fee of two dollars and cents. That's another eight dollars, times twelve is another ninety-six dollars, puts it near six million dollars. Now, this Police Department's budget is six point four million a year. This is extremely close to that. When you give us the six percent, it's like on the total bill, rather than give, adding one or two percent, it's like we're getting it retail when the city gets it wholesale. The, uh, Water Department last year transferred one point five eight million dollars back to the general fund. Now, this money, if it's the same this year, could easily absorb this six percent in February. There are people in this city on fixed incomes. Every dollar counts, and I find this exorbitant charges that are being given back to the general fund that could be used to alleviate some of these costs and these water bills. I do remember when they used to be thirty-five, forty dollars. Now, it's even under late charge on top of that when you pay it. I've talked to a lot of people. They're disturbed, disturbed to see this fourteen percent increase in six months. Marietta, instead of the six percent, just charged twenty-four cents, twenty-four cents per thousand gallons used. So they're not even charging the six percent. So they're, uh, a very minimal charge. And for us to add another six on top of eight in six months, I find outrageous. And again, finding out that, uh, for years, these rates, we question, are we getting wholesale rates? We know we are from Cobb, but are we getting retail rates instead of wholesale? And some of the people on this panel know this, this, been doing this for years, and to have an exorbitant amount of one point five eight surplus transferred back at the end of the year. I'll be interested to see at the end of this year what surplus is transferred back. We are, to me, getting way overcharged for only once a week trash and recycle. That's only four times an average a month, and a twenty-dollar charge on top of that, let alone the fifteen dollars, thirty-five dollars. I really don't understand it. Many people don't. We'll be watching that. Thank you.
Mayor Cochrane Doyle, ten seventy-eight Oak View. Topic is comments.
Hey there. I'm interested in how the very day Granicus kicks in, the city will suddenly be interested in transparency. While you have backroom meetings on how best to be transparent, other cities are simply being transparent. Um, Brookhaven has been a city for about a month, and already its meetings are all online. The city of Snellville simply records their meetings and archives them in a YouTube format. The city of Roswell and Woodstock both have their city hall meetings, their downtown development authority meetings, and work session meetings archived with detailed minutes as well as some with video. All include public participation on the agenda. The same work meetings in Smyrna are called the Committee of the Whole. They are upstairs at City Hall behind a locked door. Citizens may attend after ringing a doorbell and waiting to be let in. This is the most important meeting citizens need to be attending. These are the meetings where things are decided about how our tax money is spent and the direction of our city. If you want to be transparent, the first step would be to move that meeting downstairs to either City Hall here, in the chambers, or in one of the downstairs rooms. Make it accessible to people, and, um, archive these meetings, videotape the meetings, and put the detailed minutes online. Also, most other city websites have constant updated information on road and development projects. Roswell's is called the Cone Zone. Woodstock keeps its citizens informed on a monthly basis detailing all their projects. They had a monthly detailed, um, outline on the five seventy-five Ridgewalk, um, interstate bridge, and, um, anyway. In comparison, look at the lack of info on the Concord Road project. This thing was voted on as a nine million dollar project in two thousand and five. The people in Smyrna absolutely have a right to know how this money was spent and what properties were purchased with that money. We deserve to not be misled about the cost of Concord Road, why it was changed, and who authorized the change. The citizens did not authorize this change. The change was buying up all the small businesses instead of doing the project and then adding it back into the twenty-eleven splopped at eleven million more. This is turning into a twenty million dollar project, and it is not the best thing for the neighborhoods. In comparison, the Sandy Springs Bridge was finished in a year and a half, adding all new lanes on the interstates and a new lane over the bridge, over two eighty-five, and it cost three and a half million. I've lived in Smyrna Heights since two thousand and seven, and not one single council person or the mayor have come into the neighborhood and talked to the residents about the project and what's gonna happen. It's devaluing all our homes. Um, this is unacceptable. And on top of it, we have an empty Kroger, we have vacant strip centers, we have a city-owned metal skeleton, and we will have a vacant elementary school soon. There has also been nothing but silence on Johnquill and Belmont Hills. I think it's time to follow in Roswell's footsteps. Mayor Jerry Wood, at Mayor Jerry Wood's insistence, he brought forward a three-year term limit resolution for all elected city hall meetings, uh, officials, including the mayor, the boards, and the commissions. His reason was to ensure people ran for office for the right reasons, and to give new perspective, and to keep officials from being coming complacent. Those are his words.
That's tough.
And it's his last term as mayor. He's done an excellent job. He's open. He's, his city's wonderful, and if you want to see what a trail is, go up to, um, Lita Thompson Park at Holcomb Bridge and Mountain Park, and walk through that park and see what a real trail is.
Sebastian Jackson, thirty-one eleven. It says Far Emerald Lane. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Um, comments and introduction.
Feel right at home here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, Council as well as citizens of Smyrna. My name is Sebastian Jackson. I'm here because I've applied for the position of Assistant Director, uh, Parks and Recreation here in Smyrna. Uh, I graduated from Morehouse College, and I'm the former city manager for the city of Lovejoy. Uh, there in Lovejoy, I ran a community center, and I implemented a number of programs, which include a senior breakfast that was monthly for fifty-five-year and older seniors, as well as an arts and craft weekly program for seniors, as well as weekly Zumba classes for seniors fifty-five years and older, as well as in the summertime, I implemented a program for basketball for children, as well as, um, a day camp for children, and one of the fun events was, it's called Friday Family Fun Day. We did that once a month. It was for families with movies and, uh, games, all kinds of fun stuff there in Lovejoy. I could stand here for how long and tell you all about my qualifications and my accomplishments down there, but, um, instead I'll just say I'm very anxious and excited to hopefully serve you all, Mayor and Council, as well as the wonderful citizens, citizens in the great city of Smyrna.
Sebastian, I, I'm, I don't think we've ever had anybody that had applied for a job that came before the council, and I'm impressed.
I just, I'm, I'm a community guy. I, I enjoy coming in and, and, um, you know, talking face to face, and hopefully after the meeting I'll be able to shake some hands here with people in the community and, um, say hi.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Betty S. Williams, nineteen eighty-six Turpin. Anything else, Betty, you wanted?
No.
Okay, okay, it's from Lovejoy, okay. Um, that concludes the portion of the agenda that, for citizens' comments. Um, before we close, um, I'm not gonna say anything that I'm glad that, uh, Chief Lee's here. Um, everybody else has, has said that, but I, I do want to say something about, and I saw this this morning, uh, as they were talking about the, um, storm that hit, um, Adairsville in Bartow County, and, uh, they said some of the folks did not hear the sirens go off, and, uh, uh, they said the reason was those sirens are for people that are outside, and oftentimes you can't hear them on the inside, and it happened so quick. Um, but there is an app that you can get on your smartphone, and listen, I'm the last person in the world that should have a smartphone, um, that you can, there's an app that you can get, um, at least I'm man enough to say I'm not smart enough to. There's an app that you can get that will notify you almost instantaneously if there is a storm that is coming in your area. Um, there, there again, when the sirens go off, you know, a lot of times people don't hear them, uh, and I know they went off a couple, three times last week, uh, and I kept calling and saying, "Okay, where's the storm?" And then when the weather got bad, the sirens didn't come on, so it'll be interesting next meeting, uh, to hear from, uh, Chief Alanyan as far as, uh, the things that we're supposed to do and the issues. But if, if you have a smartphone, or, or next time you're in either Verizon or, um, AT&T or Sprint or whatever they are, you could probably ask them about that, about that app. It's pretty neat. It's, uh, um, you can get it, and you'll know if something happens before you wake up and you find yourself out in the front yard with your trailer turned upside down. So, uh, but it was, uh, I just learned about that this morning, so. Uh, any other thing to be brought for this body? If not, I want to declare this meeting adjourned at eight thirty-five.